Good evening, everyone. Going to call the meeting to order. And the order for this evening will be as follows. First item will be 2019-21 Three Hillside Terrace. Second will be 2019-1865 North Broadway. Third will be 2019-24 116-118 Main Street. Fourth will be 2019-22 9 Beechwood Road. Fifth will be 2019-25 23 Cedar Lawn Road. And sixth will be 2019-23 33 Maple Street. So Sarah, is everybody up to date on their taxes?
Yes.
They are, okay. And then we also have minutes from September and October's meetings that were circulated and comments were made and edited and finals were passed around. Does anyone have any comments on the minutes?
No.
Then can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
A second?
I made the motion.
Susan made the motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. With that, let's begin. First item is 2019-21 Diana Rubin and Alexander Ruse, Three Hillside Terrace.
Good evening, I'm from Hudson Engineering. Last time we were here regarding Three Hillside, it was the legalization of a patio that was originally gravel and then paved over. There were no comments, I believe, from the board members with any issues. We addressed the HON comments, we went to zoning, we got the variance, and so we're just looking for a site plan approval tonight.
Okay. Any comments from anyone on the board? Any comments from anyone in the public on this matter? Marion, do you have a reservation?
Where is in September 2019 Diana Rubin and Alexander Ruse applied for a site development plan approval to legalize an existing brick walkway on the property of Three Hillside Terrace. The walkway exceeds permissible lock coverage and is located within four feet of a side property line, therefore requiring variances from zoning board of appeals. The CBA granted the variances at its meeting on October 22nd. HON Engineering reviewed the plans and in a memorandum dated September 3 listed several issues which were satisfactorily addressed in a subsequent submission. Planning Board held a public hearing on the application on September 3 and November 6. It's type 2 action on sequera. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board grants a site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled additions and alterations, Three Hillside Terrace, prepared by Hudson Engineering last stated September 10.
Any comments on the resolution?
No.
Then can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Next item is 2019-18 Judd and Katherine Harker, 65 North Broadway.
Good evening, I'm from Hudson Engineering again. Last time we were in front of the board, we had a slightly different layout. This is essentially a similar layout with a lot of the areas flattened out. We also have a landscaping plan included this time. Grading has been flattened out, so it's roughly 6% to this point, 5% down to the wall. Then slight slope, eight feet of area here before we have a second wall. The wall is roughly two feet along this area, gets a little higher as you go along here. But keep in mind with regard to the wall height, two feet of that is parapet. It's not actually grade on the other side. It's almost like a sitting wall, type of restrictive area.
What are you saying, the wall that faces the aqueduct?
The first wall closer to the property.
Right, but that wall, the one that's facing the app, it's facing west.
Yes, yeah. Just do now facing the aqueduct at this point.
What's the section there?
This is the section right here.
You make difference.
Sorry. Which point?
You're saying that your wall's two feet high, correct?
Two feet high.
Above grade.
Above grade on the high side.
Right. And then on the other side?
150 or four at the lowest point, so it's roughly seven feet relative to the neighbor's property, roughly three feet or so relative to the lower wall.
But I think it gets it high as eight feet.
On this side.
On the west side.
Yeah, on the neighbor's property, not on this side.
Which is, doesn't meet code.
Yeah, we need a variance for it.
Right. But what you're doing is you're, so you're not creating a privacy wall there. You're actually creating a wall that you want to fill behind, so that you're raising your elevation about eight feet, correct?
Yeah, that's what the section shows.
Right. And then, on top of the eight-foot wall, you're going to put a six-foot aluminum railing fence. So if I'm standing in your neighbor's property to your west, I'm looking up at an eight-foot wall and a six-foot fence at 14 feet, right on my property line. So I have no buffer whatsoever. And in addition, as I said, it's not a privacy wall, so it's not giving me any privacy from Mr. Harker. It's actually Mr. Harker is now looking into my yard, and I have no privacy whatsoever. That just is, does not fit well with me at all. I mean, that is, and in addition, you're in the side yard setback, right? And then the same thing, and I believe too, when we last met, we also, I went back and read the minutes, we asked for two things. We asked for, to show us a wall at the old Croton Aqueduct buffer and to pull the wall off of the side yard setback. And you didn't do neither one of those. So you haven't done what we've asked you to look at. So I went ahead and did it for you, okay? And here's what I find. What I find is, if we look at your site plan as it is now, going to your first wall that faces the old Croton Aqueduct and going all the way over to the west property line, you have a backyard, you're creating a flat area of approximately 5,229 square feet, all right? And you're bringing in 538 cubic yards of fill, according to your plan, all right? If you had brought the wall back to the side yard setback and brought it back to the old Croton Aqueduct buffer, you'd come up with a flat area of 4,230 square feet. It's 81% of what you're showing on there. In addition, that 999 square feet that you wouldn't be filling would reduce the cubic yards of fill needed from 538 to 317. That's a reduction of 40% of the fill that you want to bring in. And those walls at the side yard setback and the old Croton Aqueduct setback would be less than six feet. So you, there's much less of a physical impact, you're meeting all the setback requirements, and you now have room to create a buffer between your property and the neighbor's property, because otherwise they're still going to be looking at a four-foot wall and a six-foot railing fence on top of that. Whereas here, there's absolutely no buffer to your neighbor to the south. And whether your neighbor to the south says it's okay or not, it's not okay with me, and I don't think it's okay with the board members here, is what you're proposing, all right? And I think you could, and again, as I said last time, to what the planning, what the zoning regulations state is, that the planning board is to look at these site plans and to minimize the impact on topography and to minimize the amount of fill that is brought into a site. And I think by, if you would meet the code, you would reduce the amount of fill and you 'd reduce the amount of wall that you need and you'd reduce the amount of impact on the topography to the south. So, those are my comments at this point, so. Anyone else want to make any comments?
I distinctly recall saying that the south wall, which is on the property line, should be similar to the wall that's on the north property line, so that, which is meaning a setback, so that you could put some foliage there to screen the wall. And also, I see no reason to interfere with the Croton Aqueduct buffer. I mean, it's not like you have to do this and we really need this because we have certain requirements and it's a hardship, we gotta infringe on the Croton Aqueduct. I don't see any reason why you have to infringe on the Croton Aqueduct. It just doesn't, it doesn't click with me, I have a pardon.
And I think also, if you look at the aerial photo that you submitted to us showing the outline of the walls that are being proposed on your property, when I look at this area along the Croton Aqueduct, the only other site that really infringes upon the OCA setback is Villa La Warra, right next door to you. That property, that house was built almost 100 years ago, predates the zoning ordinance, and certainly predates the requirements for the OCA buffer.
Yeah, and I remember another thing you said, well, the neighbor doesn't object currently. Well, the neighbor is not someone who's going to live there, he's someone who's developing the property for someone to buy. So I don't buy the fact that the neighbor, the current neighbor doesn't object.
You said he might live there, you said he's not?
He might, he might not. I don't buy that.
There's a sign on Broadway saying the house is for sale, and that sign has been out there for months. Mrs. Ragnelli is a builder.
I've either had the misfortune or the fortune of not seeing this before, okay? And you've been here before, you know how, yes. And so, I would hope that you had explained to your owner, your client, what the typical concerns are here. This one's even more of concern, because for me at least, this is the dialogue between what the owner wants and what the village wants. And there's a public thoroughfare at the end of this, that's the Croton Aqueduct. It's a, it's a real gift for the village. And all along, especially along here, there is no, like you explained, there is no walls that are new, okay? And the spirit of the buffer, the spirit of a comprehensive plan, is to, in fact, do the exact opposite of what you're proposing, okay? Is that you bought a house that has a topography. To come in and fill like your section is against every planning aspect, including the aspects of the comprehensive plan. So it's really hard for me, because I'm supposed to sit here and kind of protect the village from things like this. So I think that, no, even the way it's being done is not sensitive, okay? It's a very straightforward wall, you put some shoulder, you know, your landscaping plan shows some trees that are just like straight across, stuff like that. So nothing there is at all in the spirit of what the buffer was supposed to be. So I strongly recommend you go back, figure out a way to make this so that when I walk down there, first of all, you have a six-foot high fence right on the aqueduct. Then you're gonna have this wall, which, I think your number's a little bit off, because I did some numbers, maybe I'm off, and I'm getting like nine-foot walls.
It's nine foot at one corner, by the way, it's probably, yeah.
Yeah, that's a nine-foot drop. Look at your section. You can't have kids with a nine-foot drop without having a railing, a fence that's 42 inches high, above that. So we're talking about, and now I'm at the aqueduct and I'm looking up at this thing, the perspective of that is going to be so overpowering. So, and it's just for this sliver on this entire aqueduct. And we've had plenty of other projects that have come across about the aqueduct, and we've been very careful about understanding what the aspect of that is for the village, for the people that are gonna walk and ride bikes and stuff like that along there. I'm not saying that anyone can't have a backyard, but now they have a front yard that they have to deal with, because that's what this is. So, no, I'm, I think you have to go back to, I don't know what happened before, but you know that through other projects, the interest of this is for me, so.
Any comments from anyone in the audience?
This is Judd Harsher. When I walk the aqueduct and I look at the walls that are there for retaining.
Excuse me, your affiliation?
I'm the owner, Judd Harsher, the owner of the home. I actually take appreciation in the engineering marvel along the aqueduct of some of the walls and retaining walls that are there. And I think that they, in my opinion, I think that they add character to the aqueduct and to the village. You know, I know that it may not have been done in a while, as far as, you know, like Villa La Warra next to me, the retaining wall that's there is right on the property line. I mean, this does have a setback. The initial wall on the south side is four feet, which is 30 feet back, which is the original buffer. And my understanding is that, you know, landscaping walls were included into, to be structures. So like if you wanted to build, write a house or a shed, or that would have to be 50, 50 feet. At one point in the history, I believe, that landscape walls were not included as structures. So more recently, they've become part of structures which puts the 50 feet back.
That's not, that's not correct.
Okay, that was my understanding from, okay?
That's an overgeneralization.
Okay.
Walls over, walls over three feet, walls over six feet have been forever exempt in setbacks.
Forever, okay. Okay, all right. The wall on the north side fades into the landscape, so it's only a foot or so. And then, yes, at the south side where the grade slopes down, it would be, it would be four feet at the max, and then a tier back, eight feet, and then another, and then another four foot. And then on top of that four foot, yes, there'd be that two-foot wall on top of that. So it would be, it would be six feet from that second tier. And the concern about, you know, safety and so forth, yes, there would be a fence, so that, so that, you know, would prevent anyone from going over the south side of where that ledge would be. You know, I think, you know, the walls, you know, I've previously done some walls at my previous residence up in Cedar Ridge, turned out beautiful. You know, I care for the village, I think that the quality of the work will be excellent and will add to the beauty along the aqueduct. So as opposed to people walking the aqueduct and, you know, just, I mean, kind of seeing my yard with, you know, kids', you know, frisbees and, you know, things out on the lawn scattered, this would create a buffer from, you know, a barbecue, you know, just stuff, stuff in my yard. It would allow people walking the aqueduct to have some landscaping, have some, you know, beautifully made, you know, stone laid walls, and it would be back 30 feet from what they currently see. I think it would be, I think it would be beautiful, so that's.
So here's the thing, though, with this, and you have to understand from our perspective, and really from your perspective too, is there are rules, okay? There are rules that we're supposed to follow, okay? And the reason why they increased the buffer was someone made a decision, not us, someone made a decision, that that should be even more of a green space, okay? So that's a law, that's basically, so you can't come and say, oh, well, because I'm gonna do a nice job, I don't really want to, I want to ignore that. That, then everything falls apart. So I get what you're trying to say, but I disagree, because there are rules that we have to follow and mandates that have been set up by others to keep this village, and this is a collective whole that made these decisions. And one of them I'm very specific about is how we treat the existing land. We're not supposed to come in here with truckloads of fill. It just isn't supposed to happen. That's not what this village wants. And so, it's hard for me to sit here, knowing that this has happened time and time again, that someone would come and propose this. And that's why I put the onus on you for not kind of explaining this to your client, that these are, you know, high-pressure points. And even worse is, this one is so public. So what you have to remember too is, we have to look at not just what you want to do, but then what is the next guy gonna want to do? Because once someone says yes to this, that entire aqueduct is gonna be full of walls like this. They are, because they're gonna say, oh, this guy got it, I want it. And that's not, that's the blowback. So that's how I look at my little dopey little seat here. It's nothing against you, it's that our client is the village, so that's what we're supposed to do.
While your aesthetics were appreciated, we can't even get to the aesthetics until you move the south wall setback and off the infringement of the aqueduct, and from my point of view. You know, the aesthetics are good to talk about, but only after you take care of these infringements.
Yeah, and I think, again, we're looking out for not only the village, but for the surrounding neighborhood too. To put an eight or a nine-foot wall right on the property line and then put a fence on top of it, and again, it's not a privacy issue. It's that now you're making, you're being able to look right into your neighbor's yard. They would have to spend thousands of dollars to put in trees that are 15 feet tall to give them some privacy in their backyard, once you build that wall. Because you're gonna be nine feet or 10 feet above them, whereas right now, you're level with them. It's just totally out of character with the lots as they exist today.
The way the landscape. The way that the landscape looks on the topo maps right now is not the way that the land is current. So on the south of the property, if you were to be on site, you would see that the elevation is higher than is currently documented, so.
Well, then, you should resurvey it.
But they're not at final elevation, the construction hasn't, they haven't been given a C.O. for that house.
We haven't received a survey, Chuck.
Right.
Yeah, so then it should be resurveyed, and you should come in here with accurate information.
But the thing is, that may not end up being the final grade on the next door neighbor's yard, because he's still under construction. It may end up.
It doesn't matter, we still have issues of where the walls are.
Yes, it is, because it doesn't meet code. I mean, you're right at somebody's property line. I mean, that's not, that's not a suburban solution, a 10-foot wall in a backyard. That's an urban solution, and this is not an urban situation. So you've heard from the board. I mean, if you want to continue with this, I suggest you go back and look at how you can reduce the amount, the impact, the visual impact, the impact in terms of the amount of cubic yards of earth that are being brought in here, and in meeting the OCA setback.
Just so you know, okay, so you're not the first one. And typically what happens with this is that then we ask for visual images that are gonna show us what kind of mitigation you're going to do for specific things. Like for instance, what is this gonna look like from the aqueduct? I want to know what that's gonna be like. I can tell you right now, based on what you have, it's not something that I'm gonna be that interested in, because I don't think it works with what our, like I said before about the comprehensive plan and what our mandates are. So if you're gonna try to come up with a solution that works here, I think you have to try to sell it to us, and sell it to us in a way that we can say that, okay, this works for the village, because they've done this or they've done that. As it is right now, you're on one side of the fence, and for me, the village is on the other, and there's a big gap in between. So it's really the onus on you to try to figure out how you can merge that in some sensitive way. And, you know, that's all.
And I assume you might pull the walls back as we suggested, and when you do that, you would, to go with the new location of the walls, because that would be the next step. Rather than come back with the walls where we would be more pleased with.
So you're suggesting on the south side to set it back and then have landscaping?
Next weekend, the walls are fine, now you need a landscaping. So I'm giving you a heads up that should you choose to do what we're suggesting, moving the walls back on the south and meet the aqueduct setback.
The west end, the west end and the south?
Right, yeah. With that, when you do that, you should have a landscaping plan to show how the landscaping is going to be with the new wall locations. Not that you come back, yeah, move the walls, oh, good, now you need a landscaping plan. But also, that's another month, so just giving you a heads up.
Yeah, the other thing too is that you have to look in terms of like the bulk of this too, because to me, the interest is going to be, what am I gonna see from the aqueduct, okay? So I would tell you that the first thing I would do is try to figure out how to design this so that it has the minimal impact on my experience walking down the aqueduct.
It doesn't look like Fort Ticonderoga.
Right, so I'm just afraid that you're gonna get misguided, because it's not just moving the walls back, I think it's figuring out a way to reduce the mass of what you're proposing to do. You're saying about the heights too, so that you have to, by code, 42 at, or 36?
Residential's 36.
Yeah, 36, you have to have a fence, that you can put a five-foot sphere in around that whole thing, if the jump is more than three feet?
Thirty-two inches.
Okay, so that means whatever wall you're building is gonna have a fence above it, which is gonna have even more of an impact. And other people that have come here with some similar type things, they've figured out ways to mesh this into what the landscaping is, as opposed to this very orthogonal soldier-like experience that you're proposing, so.
Get like a wall, soldier abreviations or something.
The landscape needs to be more natural in the way it appears, particularly from the aqueduct. Next item is 2019-24 Eileen Fisher, 116-118 Main Street.
Peter Reynolds, North River Architecture and Planning. We're hearing an application for a special use permit for legal bed and breakfast at 114-116 Main Street. It's a property owned by Eileen Fisher, is the principal member of an LLC, Main Street Capital, 116 Main Street Capital. Shall I introduce the project? It's a, currently it's a four-unit historic building that was renovated, our firm helped renovate it, and I think it was completed, the CBOs completed about two or three years ago. As the use matters emerged for, I mean, the family and so forth seemed to make most sense to her, that the company, that if they could find a way to legally use it for bed and breakfast, seemed like the best usage. We're seeking to find ways to comply with what the village's intentions are around bed and breakfast. It's a fully sprinkled building, we think we comply with all, certainly all the life safety issues regarding your dress, fire, and so forth, parking. And we seek to see what the village agrees in terms of the appropriateness for that building, for that usage.
That's it? I think one of the things that I noticed was that there were kitchens in just about every unit, which made them really apartments. And then in addition, in the owner's unit, it didn't really show a kitchen, so it was kind of confusing.
Yeah, well, it was not built for the intention of having multiple short-term rentals, and so kitchens were, kitchens were put in, and that's a use change request. Those are very nice kitchens, it would be a hardship to take them out if that were the only way to comply, so that, that's a discussion point. They were put in not for the intention of bed and breakfast usage, that's why.
But doesn't that make them apartments, individual apartment units? If they have a kitchen and a bathroom in each one, it's an occupying unit, isn't it, Marion?
Well, actually, more significantly, one of the requirements for the special permit and in defining B&Bs is that there can't be kitchens. And so, so that's a problem.
Mm-hmm. And if the kitchen, it's a cooking, I understand it's a cooking issue?
Cooking facilities, yeah. You have a kitchen.
Wet bars could be allowed.
If you have a wet bar. The stoves are what make the issue.
Okay, and if the stove was decommissioned or removed, does that work?
It's gotta go.
If the stove, okay. Is that, so if the stove is removed? Is that, so if the stove is removed, would that constitute...
No, we, we can go over specifically each unit because they're all a little unique. I think Pat's, your comment is that the full-time living person doesn't have a kitchen. There's not a common kitchen. I think that's more the, that we, we have to work offline on that.
Yeah, sure, we can make that work, that's, that seems fine.
Yeah, I mean, it shows an owner's unit and it shows three bedrooms and lots of closets.
Well, the owner's unit does not, you notice the owner's unit is open to the kitchen on the second floor. In other words, it's a habitable unit per se, especially insofar as I, as I understand the intention of this board is for there not to be all separate apartments there. It's a bed and breakfast. It's, uh, the top, the top floor is habitable with use of the kitchen on the second floor.
So...
So, there was the...
Is, is this the owner's unit, so then they, they have to go upstairs?
Yeah, the kitchen, the kitchen that they would use is on a separate floor from...
And so which apartment is that in then?
That's in the second floor apartment.
Is it on a plan?
Sure, sorry. I'm drawing A101, activity of owner's unit shown on the third floor. And in apartment three, there's a, um, there's a kitchen to the back of the property, that'd be the north side of the property. It's accessible by the owner's unit, it's essentially a common staircase. It's not currently closed off. So, existing usage now, the people up on the third floor, the owner's unit is kind of uses that kitchen on the second floor because it's, it's open to it.
It's not intended to rent that unit?
No, no.
So then apartment three and the owner's unit would all be one unit?
Yes.
And then, what's on the other, the other floor?
On the, on the main floor, there's, there are two separate units. One of them has two bedrooms and one has one bedroom, so... Basically, there are three, there are three kitchens in the building, is approved by the village?
Uh, two. Only two. Is there a proof plan?
You may have three, but he's saying only two.
No, I understand, okay, that's news to me, I'll take a look.
But those issues have to be worked out. And are there any other issues that any of the board members have?
I, I think the kitchen is my, my issue of concern. You know, either your apartments or the bed and...
Right.
Boy, I'm really confused, okay, I'll be honest. A, I don't know what, what we're supposed to do to start with. B, it sounds like some of the work sort of happened over...
They have some work to do.
Yeah, doesn't this make more sense to like somehow get this resolved?
I mentioned we have some work to do offline.
Right, and then for you to come here and propose something that...
We only, we only literally just pulled plans up, we've been pretty busy, so...
So, that's fair enough, so thank you. We'll see you again.
Okay, thanks so much.
I just mentioned that one thing that's important for you with...
Speaker?
Yeah, on, on your, on your application, sometimes you've got yourself as the owner, sometimes you have Eileen Fisher, sometimes you've got 116 Capital. I think it's 116 Capital, just, just be consistent because one of the requirements for a special permit is that the owner has to be on premises. And if the owner's Eileen Fisher, well, she's not going to be on premises there. But I believe the owner's 116 Capital and 116 Capital will be there through the agent. So, just make sure, just, just clarify that on your application.
Sure, just for clarity, my name is on there only as the applicant and as agent for...
Right, it's okay, but just go through the application and, and make sure that it's all consistent.
Sure, okay. Thanks very much.
Is this in, in the actual resume?
That I got, and I don't think there is any inconsistency in that. My name's only on it as applicant.
Yeah, that's, that's obvious, I'm sure it's because of the requirement.
Well, like it's signed owner, signed Eileen Fisher, well, you say Eileen Fisher, you know, principal of 116 Capital.
Okay, I'll work that, make sure we get that straight, thanks very much.
All right, next item is 2019-22 Daniel and Kelly Polliter, Nine Beachwood Road.
Hello, Brandon Stewart, representing Michael Lewis Architects and the owners at Nine Beachwood Road, Daniel Polliter and Kelly Polliter. Daniel and Kelly currently have two children with twins on the way, so they're looking to expand the playroom on the east side of their house. So, what's proposed is a roughly 250 square feet, one-story addition with basement storage below that's open to the current playroom, which sits in this corner of the house. We're also proposing to reduce the sort of unwidely deck at the rear. Here you can see the existing outline of it and the previous outline of it. And lastly, to relocate an existing stone walkway that currently leads directly to Beachwood Road and connect it to the existing stone, uh, concrete steps which lead to the driveway, which currently just lead to lawn. Here's another detailed site plan. You can see the, we're showing the trees in this area of the site, which are all to be protected. We noted the error in our identifying of this, this tree here in Suzanne Mellon's comments, so we'll, we'll update that on the tree schedule. We've provided the stormwater calculations here. One coltech is required, so we're providing that with proper setbacks. The entire addition is compliant with regards to coverage, with regards to setback, and with regards to F.A.R.
Before you turn that, is there construction access between those trees?
No, all of the construction access is proposed along the existing driveway. And then here's the tracking pad, sort of around the rear of the house. Yeah, since we're doing work at the deck, seemed like that, that would be, that would make sense to protect the, the front lawn and, and trees. Any other questions on the site plan?
Yeah, well, I think it's noted in Doug Han's memorandum, I also may note it too, I think. You might need to show the topography on the site.
Correct.
Again, in the look, because I was looking at the location of the silt fences and they didn't seem to make much sense really. Because I was trying to take the spot elevations that you were showing at various points on the house and the silt fences didn't seem to make sense compared to the way the land was sloping, which was from, from east to west.
Correct, yes. Yeah, I think we automatically had the silt fence follow the construction fence, but you're right. Technically, it would only be required at the lower portions of the site.
Well, that's going to be there too, on the front yard too, where you're putting in the walk down there. You have a silt fence going all around the walk, which really isn't necessary. Where you need it is basically along the driveway since everything is, is sloping towards the driveway. You can save yourself money and time by not putting a silt fence all around the, the site area, right?
You're talking about this silt fence?
Yes.
Right.
Again, show us the, the topography. I'm basing it on the spot elevations you have at the two corners of the house, that it's sloping towards the, the east. Yeah, so if it's not, well then, okay, fine, but then adjust the, the silt fence accordingly.
Right, and sometimes too, we, we were accustomed to showing silt fences above slope as well to protect clean runoff from entering the construction site and becoming contaminated. So, we've, we've seen it both ways, where it's only at the bottom or where it's at the top and bottom. But you're, you're right, topo lines would definitely help to visualize. And we'll, we'll take a look at this too, because this might, might make more sense a different way. Just very quickly, here's the elevations. Here's the side, this is what you see from the front, from Beachwood Road. Here's the small addition, which is setback slightly from the principal structure. And here's the end of it, matching in style with, with the rest of the building.
Where are your AC units, where are the compressors gone?
Yes, so those have been relocated from, let's see.
Henry was asking, where are the compressor units for the air conditioning located?
So currently on the demolition plan, you can see they're located right next on the left of the masonry chimney. And that's right where the addition is going, so those will be relocated to be directly in front of the, of the masonry chimney, but still nestled within that corner that's created. And so...
I'm sorry.
Oh, just, there was other comments about notes and, from Han, and just simple things that we're happy to comply with.
Any other comments from any board members? Or any comments from anyone in the public on this matter? No, I, I think then if you address those issues, come back next month.
Perfect.
Better shape.
Great, thank you.
Next item is 2019-25 David Squires, 23 Cedar Lawn Road.
Douglas McClure for the Squires. The project is to convert their existing bedroom space on the, it's a split level, so the second floor, never know how to count all of those floors, into a more functional master bedroom suite with a bathroom and better closets. And to do that, we're proposing that we extend the existing dormer a little bit on the second floor. So, there's an existing dormer now, we're going to pull it out a little farther, put a bathroom in the back, and expand our closet. The project is still within the existing F.A.R., doesn't affect coverage at all and really has minimal effect on the exterior, just spreading the dormer out a little longer. I know Doug had some comments about showing the leaders and all that. All those comments are very easily addressed.
Just, is there, do you need a lay-down area on, on this project?
For construction tools? I can note that on the plan, they would use their driveway. Since it's mostly interior work, there's not a lot of...
It shouldn't be, but that's what, to make sure that it's addressed. Um, anybody have any comments? No? I, I think those comments were, were pretty minor and I think that, you know, Marion, do, do we have a resolution on this?
This at first.
Whereas in November 2019, Lucian...
He's upset it's...
No, I'm very excited.
He wants to come back.
I've heard, this is like a unicorn, I've heard that this happening.
In November 2019, Lucian David Squires applied for site development plan approval to expand an existing dormer on their house at 23 Cedar Lawn Road. Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in a memorandum dated November 6th, had only several minor issues with the application. Whereas the planning board held the public hearing on the application on November 6th. It's a type 2 action under SECR. However, it resolved that the planning board grants site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "Squires Residence 23 Cedar Lawn Prepared by McSee Architecture, Subject to Compliance with the Items Listed in the Han Memorandum Dated November 6th."
Any comments on the resolution? No, can you have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes.
The next item is 2019-23 David Weymouth, 113 Maple Street. I'm going to refuse myself as Caesar Manfred if he would act as chairman on the site.
Are you here? No? In the notice area?
No.
No, 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 whatever.
Oh, you're still here, okay.
I'm still here.
Oh, same, where is the item?
Douglas McClure for the Weymouths. This is an existing house, obviously, on Maple Street. It's an incredibly lovely small house and there's an existing stair off of this small, they're calling it an office, may have been a nursery at some time, who knows? There's an existing stair that goes up to the attic. And as their family is growing, they would like to make use of that attic space. So, we're proposing modifying the stairs a little bit and then creating a master bedroom suite with a dormer, a gabled dormer on the front, a shed dormer on the back to allow them to put a bathroom upstairs with a walk-in closet. Sounds very similar. Again, the front, we've got this dormer to give them a little additional hidden space and a shed dormer along the back. Doug's comments, he mentioned the issue about the, we're in the view zone. Did your package include an 11 by 17 or eight-and-a-half 11s with photos?
That was of the neighbors?
Yeah, and, and the house. Yes.
The photos are there, but it doesn't show the impact, it just follows...
Well, so the, that's so you could, I could talk about the impact. I just wanted to make sure, I thought he didn't have it.
The statement that says that, that it's not going to impact.
So, because the dormers happen obviously below the ridge and you can see from the density of the neighborhood, it really doesn't affect anybody's view because it's still within the footprint of the house. It doesn't go above the existing ridge line. There are also some notes from the landscape architect. Again, I know we have to address those with tree protection, et cetera. And then finally, we do need a variance because we're going from a two-and-a-half story to a three-story.
How's the, is the FAR affected because the attic was not used and now it's...
No, because there's an existing stair, the attic counts as a full F.A.R., even though it's a half-story.
Even though you can't stand up in certain areas?
Yeah.
Okay.
But the garage also has to be added?
The garage has to be added.
It's absolutely...
But they actually have been added and I just didn't note it. I have to go back and check my numbers.
I had the impression that if you couldn't, if I couldn't stand up, that floor area wasn't counted.
That is absolutely what it should be.
The all means if the, if an attic has a pull-down stair, it doesn't count.
Last time, seven foot six.
And it's less than seven foot six.
Right, has anyone ever, I'm not to go, has anyone ever disputed this? It's very clear, actually.
We had a conversation about this in a project I did on Willow, where they had a full stair going up, but the, the ridge height was at five feet, so you really couldn't stand up there.
It's still counted.
But it's still counted as F.A.R. and there was a discussion that I was adding, putting an addition on and, you know, that was adding F.A.R. And one of my solutions could have been take out the stair and put in a...
Right.
And I would have been fine.
Yeah, that's...
Actually, if the F.A.R. doesn't change, that's a good thing.
Right.
It benefited the...
Backhanded, a backhanded good thing.
Right, exactly. It's just one of our codes lovely quirks.
It really should change because it's just not, just not right. You can write and suggest, trust this, just one of the room right now, I would love to hear about it after.
We're going to put you on a committee.
Getting back, does anybody have any questions on, are you finished, I'm sorry?
I'm done.
I have no, no questions, other than I think as a procedure that you each put in writing that there would be no visual impacts.
That's, yeah, I can address all of that.
I'm not sure we had enough views of what it looked like from the side and the back. I'm not sure we had enough views of what it looked like from the side and the back. You have that little sketch there, not sketch, but of what it looks like from the front.
I can do, I can do a side elevation.
Does anybody feel that we need that?
How about some photographs from the neighbors?
On the backside.
Well, I have the, in my, I have that. It's in there. There's a backyard shot of the whole house.
I don't think it's drawn to the elevation.
That one, right?
Yes, correct.
For the planning board review.
We have a resolu, is, is anybody having the objection to this?
We need some stuff, dog, dog.
Also needs a variance.
It needs a variance. So can I go to the next Z B A meeting?
He, he needs a variance for the third story.
Right.
Might, he might need it.
Even though the F A R doesn't change.
What?
None of you.
Need it for F A R, so you...
No, I don't need it for F A R.
Altering F A R, but it exceeds F A R. The existing will exceed F A R.
Right. But it's not changing. So there's no variance for F A R. There's a variance for creating, making.
Non-conforming condition is not changing.
Yeah.
It's not altering the non-conformity or increasing the non-conformity. So there's, there's no variance.
So all I'm getting a variance for is...
But we just want the document correct for the file.
Of course.
Someone's going to use it later on.
Of course.
Yeah, okay. I have no trouble with it.
When he comes back and takes care of everything, he should be okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay.
It's seven, I believe it's seven-six. It's just, yeah.
Okay. We're done? Can the zoning board come in?
Thank you.
Just know where the business can have a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Excuse me? All in favor? Aye.
I have a question. Sorry. Well, I'm sorry.
You need to call the heart.
Take a mic from the state your name and...
Okay, my name's Thomas Sabatino.
You need to speak at the microphone.
My name's Thomas Sabatino. I'm at ten South Airman Street. And I got a notice about the bed and breakfast special permit, but then no one ever asked if anyone had any comments, so.
Okay, well, I, we didn't close the public hearing. They, they still have to come back.
Mm-hmm. But I did come here today and was, you know...
Well, if you want, if you want to make your comments.
Well, yeah, I have a little concern because their backyard is directly adjacent to mine. And I noticed that one of the, the comments just made today was that the owner has to live there and that it was suggested that they make the corporation the owner. Seems to me that's circumventing what the intent of this role is.
No, no, no. The corporation is the owner. Their paperwork was missing, was wrong.
Yeah, but it says that the owner's supposed to live there.
Well, they are. They're going to have a resident manager who's a, a part of the corporation. Which is actually even better.
I'm against the criteria.
Okay.
Because you know they'll be there. Because it's their job, resident manager.
I don't know they'll be there. I mean, you say that, but I don't know that that will really be the case.
Well, legally, as the corporation, then maybe have a member of the corporation or an employee of the corporation be...
To reside there, to live there, reside there, live there, right?
Yes.
Not just show up in the morning.
No, no, that's, yeah, occupy that unit.
Okay. My only concern is that, you know, it just means that I already have, I noticed there's a lot of Airbnb activity there. And, you know, every time I'm in my yard, I hear another voice and, you know, you don't know who anyone is. And there's small children playing in my backyard and I'm on a residential street, but it borders that. And so I don't know that I have a strong objection, but I'd like to better understand what's going on. And I would also like to understand what can happen next there. Let's say that they choose to sell that property or something. Would that then, it can't be anything more than a bed and breakfast? Is that correct?
Well, no. It's in the business district. It's not in the residential district. So that comment is, it could be a lot of things.
Okay.
We can do hypotheticals all day long.
Okay. All right then. But so what you're saying then is as long as somebody lives there from the corporation, then that meets that requirement.
Yeah, the trustees spent a lot of time going over the code to make sure that there was someone that can address a complaint. So the reason why that mandate is there is to assure that if there is a complaint, that you're going to contact somebody to address any complaints there. Yeah. But I think the trustees spent a lot of time making sure that this code had a lot of those provisions that sound small, but they're very big to you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right then. Thank you.
Thank you. Can they have a motion to adjourn? Adjourn.